Note taker, please note that Alderman Roy Wesley has left the meeting and will not be returning. Anybody else? Everybody else is still in attendance? Okay? So why don't we start back up? We'll start with page thirty-eight and thirty-nine, the summaries. Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm Mr. Motion to approve Director of the Capital Project.
Any second on that? Okay. We'll move forward. Go ahead, Director Wilson. Any seconds? Oh, okay, he tried, okay. I thought it was a joke, okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay. Director Wilson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, so this is the summary pages for the Water and Sewer Capital Program as presented. You may recall, what? Two hours ago, hour and a half ago? That the Water and Sewer Fund was projecting a deficit of 1.1 million on about $2.4 million worth of projects. So, you know, unless there's some movement, I guess, in, you know, water revenues in some regard, then at this point, we're looking at about a $1.1 million deficit that we would need to try to either move projects out of, theoretically adjust water rates in two weeks, or... Well, those are pretty much the two options, so...
So we have some tough decisions to make in the coming weeks and months. Mayor?
Are we on page forty?
We're still thirty-eight, seventy-nine. Can I move forward to forty? Anybody question, any questions on the summary? Okay. So, maintenance of the reservoir tanks. Mayor?
Okay, we got this 535,000, but that's coming from the TIF funds. It's not coming out of any other funds. So this doesn't work towards the one that shortage, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. But looking at it says, looks like the IEPAs on us, just like they were on the treatment plant, so something that needs to be done, otherwise they're gonna start red flagging us or fineing us.
Director Wilson?
Yeah, this has been pushed back a couple of years, trying to figure out the scope. And then also, you know, HR ran into the infrastructure study up there, trying to see what that area's gonna become. But at this point, based upon the progress in that area, it's become fairly much a necessity to get this project done.
Necessity to get it done, you said?
Correct.
I see a lot of nods, okay. Okay. I'm sorry, Alderman Eugene Wesley? Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's...
Oh, forty, yeah, it was forty.
That was page forty. Again, these will each come up separate for discussion once we get to that point. So, let's keep moving. Page forty-one, the South Treatment Plant Facility Maintenance. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So, five hundred and... Like forty-five. Is that to bring... I noticed a nuts move through project. So, my question is that to bring it up to hold, or is it... Want to park that back if we have to...
Director York?
We did a study a year, year and a half ago or so now, that said it was gonna cost about $5 million to bring the treatment plant up. So this is the first stab of knocking off projects to repair the South Treatment Plant so that it is functional. The current bar screens do not work. So we need to get in there and start working on these projects.
City Manager Murmurs?
Well, what the thought process was at the time, if you remember, the council was kinda looking at, oh, do we want to transfer the South Treatment Plant over to Addison and partner up with them? Or do we want to build a whole new plant? Or do we want to do what we can to incrementally take care of our own plant? So the thought process was, hey, let's not wait, you know, X amount of years and let it run into the ground, but let's incrementally do some improvements in a capital plan to make sure the plant remains in good working order. So unfortunately, it's a little expensive to do that, but cheaper in the long run than just doing nothing.
You have a follow-up? Go ahead.
So, 2019, we did put any money into making this... So, my question is, why don't we do anything on 2019? Because Addison's been off the table for so long now.
Right.
Our compensation with Addison. When did we do anything last year?
So, just to clarify for those in the audience that are at home, we had talked about tapping into possibly Addison's wastewater treatment plant. We have the south, then we have the north. We thought maybe Addison would be a viable option. Director York, you want to comment on that? That was one of my questions I had.
Yes. To say that we haven't done anything down there, I think is a misnomer. That's on the capital. We have done things operationally. We've done things out of the budget, operational budget, in order to fix things at the South Treatment Plant. Our contract operator, Rick, has, one of his first tasks that he did when he came in in April was to go through the South Treatment Plant, come up with a laundry list of things that need to be repaired. So we've really spent the last seven months or so kinda getting our arms wrapped around what big-ticket items we need to do. We have done work down there. The plant is operating. It's operating at a level that meets all IEPA requirements. But there are things that we need to do to make the plant run better. And there are pieces of the plant that need to be repaired, fixed, brought back up to full operation. So... So we've started with this project, this 545,000, to replace the bar screens, valves, and repainting of the bar screen area. That's what we think it's gonna cost to fix that portion. So we're gonna do just one portion at a time over the next three years. And then, in FY 2023 and '24, we have phosphosaurus that's back. One of our favorite topics, phosphorus removal. So we are going to bring some money forward to try to... And my time is up, thank you. I'd like a band to play next time instead of this clock.
You lost us that phosphosaurus.
Yeah. Well, you know...
I think you've been up too late already.
Anything else to add before we go to City Manager Murmurs?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Murmurs?
I would note that Director York was just trying to inject some humor into the conversation.
Oh, I know.
We jokingly call it phosphosaurus is back after a fictitious dinosaur, so he was trying to inject some humor. That's what we call it on a staff level.
My question is...
We need humor.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, we didn't do anything on those years. So why, can we take some of that 545 and push that back?
Director York?
In '23 and '24, we are going to need, not just a permit, it's permit compliance. So that is putting in equipment, facilities, to lower our phosphorus levels based upon the MPDS permit that we will be receiving.
I'm just trying to save us some money that would definitely come back.
I understand. This is a big decision. We're gonna head down the same track as we did with the other treatment plant if we don't do something, so... Okay, I'm being warned by the timekeeper. We move on? Any other questions? Okay?
We've been talking about the other treatment plant for years up here, no one might pull the trigger on people.
We asked a question three times.
Okay. Nothing else? Let's move on, please? So we're going to page forty-two. Is that correct? Yeah, North Treatment Plant Facility Maintenance. Any questions on that page? Good? Okay. Move on to page forty-three, the Lift Station Rehabilitation Program. Any questions on this page? I thought I had a question.
No question, move on.
I had a question. That Royal Oaks Lift Station, when's it going out to bid? Has it gone out for bid already?
We are currently in the design phase. The design contract was just awarded about a month ago.
Okay.
So, once design is completed, then we'll go out to bid, and then we'll be constructed.
Yeah, it's not out to bid yet, though. Right, the design study has happened, okay.
The design study has happened.
Right.
The construction bid documents have not been prepared yet.
Okay. Any other questions? Page forty-four, the Rehabilitation of Water Tower One. Been on for a while. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
All right, so now this is where we can save some money. Is it dead desperate at that water tower? Why, is it leaking?
Director, Director York?
No, a purpose for... The purpose of this is to fix it before it starts to leak. So currently, it is rusting. Work needs to be done in order for it to stay a viable member of our society, so...
What about duct tape?
I can get that flex seal stuff, maybe that'll work.
It works on boats, right?
But it only comes in white, so it's not gonna match the toque that we have out there.
Here's another project. We have pushed back so many times, now it's coming back, and we can't cut it.
It's haunted, right, haunted, that's right, well, everybody. Mayor, go ahead.
Right, this was the 1.1 or 1.2 million dollar tower that everybody was pushing a new tower. I said, well, if we spend the 350, we'll get another 25 years out of it.
Wow.
Well, maybe 20.
Well...
Maybe not.
Maybe fifteen.
Well, this is, I mean, I know it's a laughing point, but, okay, so if we do invest at 350, right? Does it make sense to spend 350 at this point if you're saying that this, we're not gonna get 20 years out of this?
I'm not saying that we're not gonna get 20 years out of it. 20 years on the paint, 30 years on the paint is good. Just saying that the...
Alderman Catalan?
The size of the water tower is what the issue is.
Okay.
It's always been too small. But that's the 1.2 million dollar elephant in the room.
Or 1.4.
Or 1.8.
So if I understand correctly, you're coming to us for 350 to fix a water tower that's undersized, which I understand and I can appreciate, or we bring to the table at some point a 1.2 million dollar new tower that's built for a bigger capacity? That is, should, is sized more appropriately?
Give it more pressure.
And gets, yeah, better, would improve pressure, equalizes the pressure, okay? Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay. City Manager Murmurs?
It's probably closer to 1.4 by now. Additionally, the reason why we have the 300 in here now, or 320, is because the council had never been an advocate of allocating the 1.4. So we're at a point now where if we didn't want to allocate the 1.4 for years and years and years and years, well, then we better allocate the three to do something about the current tower.
I'll ask... So if, let's just say, we came to consensus that we need to build new, we need to size correctly, so we fix the pressure, equalize the pressure. How many years could we go with this existing tower before we had to actually construct a new one?
I guess I would say that there was a study prior to me being here that says we needed to build a new tower. And that's why the 1.2 was brought up originally, and that was probably five, six years ago. Now, we can make this work. It's worked for years. We can continue to make it work. But like Mr. Murmurs said, if we're not going to spend the 1 point whatever to build a new tower, which is going to be probably two to three years down the road before it's even constructed, you need to do the $300,000 because I need to make sure that what I got works.
Well, this goes back to, let's rewind back to the flooding projects, right? We're talking about, we're gonna, if we're gonna spend the money, let's do it the right way so we don't have to cause all this chaos. So if we're willing to invest 20 million to fix a long, 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 longstanding problem for those poor people on that side of town, and then we're talking about $325,000 to fix and patch, where I can't even get a guarantee, I don't know about you, but I plan on being here in 20 years, and God willing, I plan on being up here in 20 years. So, God willing, I said, but yeah, being up here in 20 years. So I don't want somebody to come back to us and say, why did you take the cheap way out? Why don't, why didn't you guys spend the extra money? Because 327, if you come back to us in 10 years, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask questions. I'm guessing many of us will ask questions, and why don't we just spend the extra money? I'm not saying tomorrow, by no means, but spend the money later and do it the right way. That's my only thought. Go ahead, Mayor?
Just to clarify, about 10 years ago, before we did the treatment plant and before we did the engineering, this was there for the pressure, right? To equalize the pressure, get better pressure, this and that. Was one...
Bless where and there on the pumps?
Right. Bless where and there on the pumps, all this great stuff. But we had the treatment plant in front of us, $30 million. So the question was, do we put the tower in as well? Back then, I remember saying, well, why don't we just, if the study we had, I remember reading it, it was very fascinating. If we did the, all the cathodic...
Cathartic protection.
Protection and everything, we could've got another 20 to 25 years. And I thought, I think I said it that time, so if we do this, we get the treatment plant up and running, we've got time then to fix or improve what we have. It wasn't a necessity at that time. But that's 10 years ago, I understand. So... But when we had $8 million sitting in the water fund before we did all those projects, nobody wanted to spend the 350. They chose to push. Previous councils, that's all they did. Push, push back, push back. And now, you guys are stuck with all the decisions. So... If we do the tower, probably gonna get about 15 years. You're gonna need a little time here to breathe. You know, get the treatment plant note down and everything, so...
Mayor, are you saying 15 years for the repair or a new tower, if we did this?
No, if, you should at least, back then, the study, I believe, said by doing this, you should get at least almost 20 years to 25. The lifespan of the tower, 75 years. I don't know why I keep remembering this stuff, but I must be dreaming about it.
Okay. Without beating dead horse, because we're not voting on it today, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So all those, let's put the, all those towers, AT&T and all that's connected to our tower, okay? Where does that money go? And how much do we get?
Director Wilson?
Money goes into the water fund. And I believe, was it the... I thought we were saying about $210,000 a year with the new Verizon contract that we have.
So...
That's revenue.
Revenue that's come in, right?
Yes.
So why could we not? Why can't we not airmark all that tower stuff, or whatever you want to call those connections, to the, to the water tower fund? To be replaced?
Going into the water fund.
Oh, it's already... So we should've had more than enough money to already do it before?
It should've been done, all right, okay. Alderman Jacob?
Going to what Alderman Messina said. We're gonna spend $330,000. It's gonna be 1.4 million. You're saying this thing's gonna last maybe another five, 10 years?
He didn't say that.
Okay, well, maybe I misunderstood.
I'm trying to find out, if we did nothing today on this, do you have any clue how many years we can get before it... Was that a two, or is that a, just got a comment, okay?
I think I've been up here enough, and I've talked about my, a lot of my projects enough, that if I bring it forward to you guys,
Yep.
we need to do it.
Yeah.
If it would've been for next year, I would've asked Brad and Jeff to put it in next year. We need to do this.
It's been up in front of me, my, every year, since I've been up here in four years, so I agree. I, and it's kept pushed off, right, okay.
So I, I would, I believe the fact that the tower will last if this is done with it. But painting the tower does not fix the other issues. The pressure issues and the pumps and all those kind of fun things, so...
Okay.
They're two different things.
Right.
But if we're gonna keep 100,000 gallon tank at Irving Park Road in the creek, we need to paint it to fix it.
Understood. And Alderman Jacob?
Yes, I mean, my thing would be, I'd rather put 250 aside for the next several years and in five years or six years, get the new tower. I mean, again, we're pushing, we're gonna spend $350,000 to do a Band-Aid versus putting $200,000 aside for the next several years and replacing the tower.
Director York, sorry. Go ahead.
To be honest with you, I don't think I can wait five years for this to get painted. There's gonna be problems. I'm gonna have a leak. There's gonna be rust, the hole, there's gonna be a hole in it. I'm going to lose a water tower if we don't do something.
Okay. Guys, we're not voting on it tonight, so it's really just amount, whether we take this amount and it's plugged in for discussion later, and then somebody changes their mind, at 250, or whatever, what do we have, 327, that would go into the budget, could just be reallocated to do it new. If we, if that discussion comes up, when this comes up, and we change the motion, we can go that direction then. Mayor, last, or your comment, go ahead, not last.
If that treatment, if that water tower goes down, we have no water pressure throughout the city. We need to... It was up here 10 years ago. I was an Alderman. I think I was here for two years. I said, we should just do it if we're gonna get 25 years. We still have the treatment plant, nobody knows. And everybody, oh, later, later. Now, now we're stuck.
Can I, so, so just to add some urgency to this, this topic. We know these businesses, all these, potentially all these new businesses are coming online. To your point, it's twofold. One, we need to build for the future because capacity isn't there. But we need to do something because we have all these new businesses that are gonna be coming online soon in these new developments. And we, you don't know, or we don't know if the water, this water tower can make it.
Yes.
Okay. That's one...
We need to get this done.
We knew it didn't get done. And it's, and it, so this is right now, it's here, it's funded. Is there anybody who wants to do anything different before we move on?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
All I was gonna ask Mr. York to do is give us an estimate at another time. What would, how many years we could do with it currently before we need to physically replace it?
He can't give it, he, he needs it today, Peter. He said, even if it's five years, he can't, he needs something done with this one.
Yes.
Even if we built the new one, or decided to build one in five years, this one...
A larger tank needs to be built.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Right. Okay, next?
Thank you.
Forty-five, Infrastructure Tap-Off Program. This is that program we offer to those that are not on City Water and Sewer. Any questions? Director Wilson?
You know, I would... Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we have three or four this year so far. There's a couple pending, I believe. Somebody was talking to Community Development about it, and so... It's been slower than I think we would've liked, but progress.
$5,000 credit towards that, right? Somewhere in here? Yes, $5,000. Yeah, that's in here, okay. Next, the Inflow Infiltration Program. Alderman Catalano?
Sorry, I'm online here. Is this, has this been successful? Have we been having repairs in the past?
Yes. The I&amp;I program has been ongoing for about six years now. We have been able to take care of a lot of the public infrastructure issues. Manholes, ceilings, some, some point repairs, lining of sanitary sewers. So we've done a pretty good job in the section on the south side of basically Ward One and Ward Two, and then over in Ward Two and Ward Three. We're kinda regrouping a little bit this year. That's why there's not a whole lot in this one, is we're going to jump, jump over to the other side of town. I'm having a lot of flow issues coming down Irving Park Road towards the treatment plant. So I'm trying to figure out how to reduce the amount of water that's coming that way. It's causing us to have some, some overflow issues in certain places. So we're gonna take a look at Ward Four, and also a little bit like in Ward, north side of Ward One, to, to take a look over there and see if we can put together some programs for out years to help reduce the amount of water that is from storm sewers, or storm water that's coming into our sanitary sewer system. So it has been successful. We've done a lot of good work, but we have to kinda jump to the next thing and try to, try to solve some other problems.
And of course, it goes out to bid, right?
Yes, yeah. RJN is our primary designer on it. They've been with us from the beginning. But every single project then does go out to bid, yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Jacob?
How often do we have to, like, when would be the next time we have to retest everything? Is it like 10 years, and we're fixing all the problems that they found? Typically, how often do you retest?
I&amp;I is a different animal. There's, there's not a lot of retesting going on. So how it was set up originally was, there was, I believe there was like 11 different areas of town that were, that were put out. We selected areas of town to do flow monitoring in, in which is the test. So now, we're not doing flow monitoring in two and, in the other sections. Sections one, two, or three, we're gonna move to a different section, section six and seven, and do flow monitoring there, and then be able to look at sanitary sewer televising and smoke testing and those kinds of things. So it's not, it's not like leak detection or something where we do the whole town every other year. It's more systematic.
Okay, good. Good. Okay, so we're gonna now move into the unfunded section of the CIP. Go ahead, Brad?
Yeah, not to put a damper on the proceedings, but just wanted to point out that we cut nothing out of this year, so there's still the 1.1 million dollar proposed deficit. For the water portion. So I know we're gonna talk some water stuff in two weeks, but just wanted to point that out, that, you know... If, you know, I'm guessing that the rate structure's probably not gonna go up by a million dollars in revenue. So at some point, you're gonna have to go back programmatically and move some things out. So I don't know, out of the CIP, yeah, so... I mean, I think, kinda know what the, you know, position A is with the water tower, but then from there, have to prioritize some things to get within the funding levels that we have for this year. So then we can figure that out next week, perhaps after water rate discussion, but something's gonna have to give, or, you know, we can't do everything that we just talked about over the last half an hour next year as it currently is.
No more contracts to renegotiate?
No.
Okay. Go ahead, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Salt Creek Stream Bank stabilization. I thought when you were, when you did a report on it, we looked at it and we were going to repair some of the damage to it. Where is that?
Director York?
Yes, so the Stream Bank Stabilization Program, we did a preliminary design contract with ERA. They came back with preliminary design. It's been held up since then due to one, $2 million, we don't have that. And then also, the Salt Creek Watershed Plan had not been completed yet, and it's still not certified by the state, so we can't get any 319 funds for it. So currently, this project is not in design and is in a state of stalled right now.
So...
Go ahead.
So there's no funding out there to get the repair work done on it?
Director York?
That's not what I said. So what I said was that we aren't eligible for state 319 funds until the Salt Creek Watershed Plan is certified. So once it's certified, then we can start looking for grant funding.
I was saying, we spent a lot of money on that stabilization.
Right.
To stabilize the creek. And not fund anything for, for, for... To stabilize the creek and not fund anything for, for, for repair or anything down the line here. That's what bothers me, and that's what would keep me up with storm water, that we spent all this money, and, and it's, and it's...
And it's just like us pushing the treatment plant. Now we're pushing something that we invested in, in the long Salt Creek, and now I can't get that stabilization.
Mayor, go.
Brad, do we put money in every year for s- stream bank stabilization, like 25, 30,000? Is that correct or not?
Director Wilson?
Yeah, that's actually what I have my hand raised for. There's, there's money in the operating budget in the general fund for some repairs of the, like, the Ajax system and things like that, there, so.
Talking about the ongoing maintenance?
The, the ongoing maintenance, yeah, I mean, this is the...
The operating expenses, okay.
But we haven't done it.
So, you're talking to them, he's talking operating expenses to keep the plant going.
He's talking about...
You're talking a capital expense.
No, 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 no.
A capital pro, okay, go ahead.
Stream bank stabilization, the Ajax system, we put money in the budget every year for it. Matt has his hand way up there, he wants to talk.
Go ahead, Matt.
Um, so, we have done work out there, um, we are trying not to do a lot of work out there, because it goes back to spending money for projects that we know that are gonna come down the pipe and...
Rip it out.
Rip it out, because the Ajax, while they were put in 20 years ago or so, they weren't maintained properly for the first 15 years of their life cycle, and now they're falling apart, yes, and that's why we wanna move forward with a new stream bank stabilization project. We all know that there are a lot of problems with this project. One is, there is no easements. Two, the stream is owned by private entities as well as some public bodies, and, um, we don't have 2 and a half million dollars to spend on the project, so, whereas, we've been talking about things all night long and spending money, and it's 2 million dollars. As soon as I can get 2 million dollars worth of grant funds, I'd be more than happy to get this project kicked off, but right now, it's, uh, not gonna happen.
Um, Alderman Woods?
Yeah, have we looked into see if there's any grants?
Director York, go ahead.
Once the Salt Creek watershed plan has been approved, then we can apply for grants.
Alderman Jacob?
So, since we keep putting money aside, do we actually have money set aside for?
Zero every year.
So, we haven't...
Director Wilson?
No, we've got to stop.
Mayor, go ahead.
As Mr. York said, we have been doing some work, but not, you know, we probably did about, we used to do about McGinty, I think, was, there's only a couple guys that do this work, and they come in, they check, and if they say the Ajax are okay, there's nothing to do. So, if they're still stable, they're not going to just, you know, rip them out and put them back in. So, we do put money aside, we're doing minimal work, that's why we're looking to do something a little more substantial, something that's gonna hold up better. Again, now we're waiting for the grant money, that's it.
Okay. Good on that, guys? Gales? Okay. So, we're gonna move to the unfunded projects, this should be pretty quick. Brad, do you have a preference on how we go through it? I mean...
Probably...
It's a matter of just going page by pages if anybody wants to move it, so...
Yeah.
All these are unfunded, um, we'll start on 48 with the Salt Creek's, uh, stream bank stabilization, which is what we just talked about. Done? All unfunded? I mean, essentially, just to give you a reality check, we really, yeah, we, there's really not much we can move, so, wanna make a motion?
We're already short a million one.
Yeah, so, so we'll move to 49, the Pine Lane Extension. Any question there?
Doing what?
Pine Lane Extension, any, go ahead, go ahead.
I would just note, it may be easier for this section, if somebody wants to propose moving something up, just do that instead of going sheet by sheet, cause they're all unfunded and they're all kinda repeat offenders from previous years, so unless there's something of immediate importance, this is where they've been.
Sure. Many of these are repeats, so, okay. Alderman Jacob?
What, on the Pine Lane Extension, uh, this goes to Mr. Cage. Since it is, since it is unfunded, I mean, this would bring new homes and new properties into the city, do we have any of those people that own those properties coming to the city saying, hey, I wanna build, but there's no street yet, or, I'm not sure who owns that property over there, is there one developer, is there several owners of those properties?
Director Cage?
Uh, I mean, that's an excellent question. This is, uh, one of those items that there will be, um, some money coming back to the city in terms of permitting. Um, we do have a, a new home going up in that area, so, um, it's money going out, but then it's activity, um, following, so we will have some, you know, new single-family homes. Um, this fiscal year, we're starting to see an uptick in single-family homes, which is great news. Um, so, will we see more activity in that area? Absolutely. Will we see some revenue on the permit side and some activity? Yes, absolutely.
Mayor, follow up, Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, I mean, have we had anybody, the, the property owners there ask that they, hey, we'd like to get the street done so we could build on that property, that's...
Director Cage?
To answer that question, sorry, I, I skipped that one, um, we have had some interest in that area, um, I know, uh, a few of the properties are owned by the same individual. Um, it's my thought that if we were to move forward with it at some point, there would be that activity that would go on, there'd be some new homes, um, but it's, you know, it's like the chicken and the egg, you, you have to, um, you have to have the chicken to get the egg, I guess, um, you have to put the street in to get the homes. I apologize, it is getting late. Um, so, it's, it's unfunded, uh, there's some benefits to it, absolutely.
Alderman Jacob?
Well, I'm all for development, what are the chances of getting this funded? Is this a true, is this 650,000 a true number? How accurate is this number?
Alderman Jacob, you making a motion to take out some monopoly money?
Can I talk?
Okay, go ahead. Um, Mayor, go ahead.
Okay, so, I actually looked into this, and it's like maybe four to five homes if we did that, 650,000, we have to come up with 650,000, put the street and the sewer, whatever, in. The five homes, I know we had the developer here and told everybody, it's 40,000 dollars a permit, that's not true, I've been looking at that. The permit, actually, he's building one of the houses on that block, I think his permit was nine thou, under 9,000.
That, that's correct.
You know, so, even if we did all five homes, and we got 11,000, it'd be 55,000, and 55,000 to 650, right now, when we gotta do a stormwater project and all the other stuff, it's not very feasible for us, so we should just leave that one alone.
Yeah, leave it alone, plus, I mean, we get what, less than, what's, less than 7% of property taxes go to the city, so even if those houses are bringing in 12 grand a year, we're getting a very small portion of that, doesn't make sense. I, I get it, it's in our ward, but it doesn't make sense right now. Go ahead, anybody else? Um, okay. My only, my only comment was the 50/50 sidewalk cost share program, I mean, I think eventually we need to reconsider this, I think it's almost, okay, go ahead, City Manager.
Yeah, typically, what we do with those is, Alderman Jacob had brought that up, and what we do is we leave it in unfunded until we bring up the policy to see if that's something that the council wants to do.
Right.
And if so, when we figure out the policy, then the subsequent year, then we plug it in. So, we don't even have a policy to fund this yet.
Okay, so we won't even talk about it yet? But just for clarity, are we talking about the same, I'm talking about someone comes in for a driveway, common sense says the two, three squares that cover their driveway, that is, the sidewalk should get replaced, are we talking this program would cover a 50/50 cost share for that situation?
I believe that was the...
That was the intention, right? Alderman Jacob?
Could be.
Director York?
Um, I have been diligently working on a couple options for the 50/50 cost share program, so, hopefully in, um, sometime soon, we will be able to discuss that.
Okay, let's keep it unfunded, just wanted to bring it up. Alderman Woods, any other?
Yeah, I, uh, would like to move the property buyout out of unfunded. Property buyout, honestly, going on, we have a...
That's already...
Land acquisition, right?
Go ahead, Director Wilson?
Yeah, that, that's something different, property, uh, land acquisition is for economic development, the property buyout, you may remember, a, a handful of years ago, the city, uh, participated in a grant program with the federal government from FEMA for buying out flood-prone properties, so it's something similar to that.
Mayor?
I thought we were already looking at creating a list of who wants to be, because the list went through once, FEMA purchased a bunch of homes and whatnot, are we in the process of kinda trying to create that list again? Cause we've had some interest.
City Manager Murmas?
We've had some interest, our last list was based upon certain flood totals or flood damages from a storm event. Um, we did have residents that were on that list that were part of the initial program, the initial grant program, that we got the grant for, and then they chose not to proceed with the grant.
Correct.
So, I don't know who's interested now or who's not, but I know there were a number on the list that may still be interested, that before got approved and then did not wanna participate. So, what this funding would be, is if we wanted to go another round and ask those people that were on the list before, if now they're interested. Now, there's no guarantee we would get the grant again, but this would be the matching money for any grants.
I'd like to do the list again.
Right, I, I, I thought that's, we were working on it, that was my understanding.
Yeah, that's gonna take some time, that's something we work on, so, that, that's why it's in unfunded right now.
Hey, why would we pull it out of funded if we're no, we're nowhere near it?
Right.
Do you wanna make a motion or...
Well, cause then we're looking at it, so, perceivably, we're not gonna spend it anyway.
We're not gonna look, we're gonna look at it in the unfunded as well, though, it's still gonna show up, just like the city hall and aesthetic and all the others. Go ahead, Mayor.
The list should come first, see how many we got, then we can put a number, the budget's coming anyway, so it can always be put in the budget, but then we still have to get the grant money, so...
Right, okay.
If you don't get the grant money, I mean, first thing is the list.
I'll look at the list.
We really need the list.
Okay, so we'll keep it in unfunded?
I would note that, that whole process is a very lengthy process from the last time, and it is very...
Correct, it could take two years, three years.
Labor intensive to do some of this stuff, so, it, it does take a long time to do some of this stuff.
We'll give you three months.
I, I think a couple of the residents, actually, it took, what, three or four years?
To wait, right?
To wait.
To get the money.
So, just for clarity, we're gonna keep that in unfunded, you guys have direction to start looking into that list, keep it unfunded. Anything else? Good? Is there a motion to, um, what's the word I'm looking for?
Adjourn.
Adjourn, the meeting, yes, that's the word.
No.
Oh, we have to make a motion to pass, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I...
Sorry.
Could say, uh, just be a motion to, um, to, uh, accept or approve the CIP as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the CIP as amended.
We have a motion with a second, roll call, please.
Who was the second?
Tony.
Tony, it's hurting Tony.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Oh, yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Great, and that passes. Next up, um, items to be considered at future meetings, um, first fiscal year 2020, that's off the table, cause we passed this tonight, uh, B fiscal year 2020 budget is up on February 28th, mark your calendars, uh, video gaming fund, winter 2019, uh, for clarity, that'll